If we could ask Clerk Segrist to call the roll for us.
All right.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster is not here. Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
Welcome, everyone.
And finally Supervisor Williams.
Hello. A call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
She'll move second.
Those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This evening, we have a special study session where we've asked three groups to come in and give us updates on, updates to the board and hopefully a little better understanding for the board's purposes of the Downtown Development Authority, Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage, as well as Partnership for the Arts. The, the board has worked long and hard in our day-to-day business and we have many other groups, subgroups, not subgroups, but separate entities and groups out in our community that do tremendous amount of work on behalf of the community month after month. And for that reason, you guys have been asked to come in and make presentations. The board also has another, following this study session, another meeting across town with some auditors that are in town for the coming week. That being said, what I'd like to do is jump right into it and we'll lead off with Amy Hamilton from Downtown Development Authority.
All right. As Pat said, I'm Amy Hamilton. I'm the DDA Coordinator. Basically, I serve as the liaison between the 12-member board and the township. I don't have any decision-making power, but I'm pretty much here full-time to kind of make sure the streetlights are on, the garden walls get fixed when they run over, landscaping gets done, just to take care of the day-to-day stuff for the DDA. Okay, so what is a DDA? The Downtown Development Authority is an economic tool that was made possible through Michigan Public Act 197. It allows municipalities to establish a DDA district with specific boundaries for the purpose of stopping property value deterioration and increasing tax value. And it has to be a defined boundary. It can't be, it's got to be one continuous boundary because I've had people in Chirico Village say, "Well, can you just put us in the DDA too?" No, we can't. So basically, ours is Ford Road. As I said, we have a 12-member board. Pat Williams serves as the Township Supervisor. He is on the board, too. And we capture a portion of the taxes within the boundary of the DDA and what we're supposed to do is take that money and invest it back into the area. Okay? This is our DDA district. As you can see, it's a non-traditional downtown because it is all Ford Road. It's about three miles long and it does run north and south of Ford Road, but it goes from the Westland boundary just past Canton Center Road. Now, in order for a DDA by state law, in order for you to be allowed to happen, you have to have a tax increment finance plan and a development plan on file. In 1997, when the DDA kind of took off and expanded, they made a 20-year plan. And in that 20 years, the board was able to accomplish quite a bit. They did some traffic safety improvements, intersection improvements along Ford Road. They upgraded some traffic signals. The big thing was the streetscape. I like to say there's a noticeable difference when you're crossing into Canton from Westland or Garden City. You know, you'll notice our decorative brick garden walls. We have a DDA streetlights and, you know, we spend a lot of money on landscaping. We also have 10 pieces of public art that are switched out once a year to kind of add some interest in the district. One of the biggest projects that the DDA did overtake in the last 10 years was the relocation of the overhead utility lines. Back in 2008, they bonded out $8.5 million to bury all the overhead lines and then also to work with some of the streetscape. We're actually going to be paying out the last of that debt next year, so we'll be debt-free. And then, one of the other big things that they've accomplished is just the Shop Canton branding. During the downturn and the recession, our businesses actually thrived. We have a very low vacancy rate on Ford Road and I think a lot of it is in part to the wayfinding that they did and just the promoting. We've got a presence on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. We've made the website itself mobile-friendly because a lot of people say, "Well, what about a Shop Canton app?" It's really hard to do an app for 400 businesses, so what we thought would be better was instead of spending a ton of money on an app, we could spend a little money and just make our website mobile-friendly. Okay? We do two Shop Canton guides per year. We do fall, winter, and a spring/summer. These are incredibly popular and they basically, we budget about $120,000 to do both guides, but we take in $60,000 in revenue from the ad sales themselves, so we basically want, it pays for one whole guide. But it's our biggest outreach tool. We have people calling us from different communities wanting to know when the next one's coming out. And the whole goal was to get people from Wayne, Westland, Plymouth, Novi, to come and Shop Canton because we want their money, too, so. And then, as I mentioned, we've got the public art. There's 10 sculptures each year that are switched out. We start in March with over 400 sculptures and then the committee has to narrow it down to 10, so it's not an easy feat. As the board knows, because we came to you last month to do a public hearing, the current TIF development plan expires at the end of this year, so we just spent over a year developing our new TIF development plan, an amended one that'll go for the next 20 years. And we've got, as you can see, we still have more, a lot of work has been done, but there's still a lot of work to do. The biggest one is traffic management on Ford Road. Everybody can agree Ford Road is a problem. The solution is the Boulevard. We just need $40 million to make it happen. So the board has decided that should we be awarded the Tiger Grant, which this is our ninth round that we're going for, that they needed to come to the table as well. So they've made the commitment to bond out between $5 and $8 million towards the reconstruction of Ford Road. You know, we also want to focus on some cross-access agreements, you know, the Mongolian BBQ, Aldi Center. It's really hard to make a left-hand turn out of there. If we can make a deal with the guy on Lily Road who's kind of not been really receptive to it, but if we could get some kind of cross-access there, we could draw traffic out into Lily instead of having to make that dangerous turn on Ford Road. We've got a lot of curbs that need repairing. There's a lot of decimated curbs out there. And then we've got, we still have dirt roads off of Ford Road that we'd like to pave some aprons on. Non-motorized transportation, everybody wants a walkable downtown. You know, we've talked about, because we've got the trail system right by 275, making a pedestrian bridge so it's safer to cross Ford Road. Right now, it's kind of like a live game of Frogger, so that would be great. And then with streetscape, we spent all this money putting it in, walls, lights. Now we need to kind of maintain what we have. You know, the garden walls are starting to show some age, so we want to, you know, wash them off, do some crack sealing on there. We want to retrofit the streetlights with LED because it's more cost-effective. And then we want to get some landscape easement agreements between Sheldon and Canton Center because currently we don't have any there that where we can, we're businesses that are struggling, we can come to them and say, "Hey, how about you sign this easement agreement and we'll take over the landscaping and maintenance of your area." So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions?
The only thing I'd like to add is, in the last year, sitting on the DDA board, what I've come to learn is the DDA and the promotion marketing that it does is not for the big-box stores. The big-box stores don't care, don't need us to do promotion, although they do benefit from us. It's the little mom-and-pop shops interspersed along Ford Road who are the biggest beneficiaries of the promotion that we do there. Are there any board questions for Amy and company? That's good.
Thanks, Amy. I probably have more once the conversation starts, but the $5 to $8 million bond, was that pending the Tiger Grant or you're moving forward?
Yeah. Because we can't bond out money thinking we'll get it in five years. Once you bond it, you have to use it within a year. So should we get the Tiger Grant, the board will bond out.
Oh, you have to use it within one year?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That's a pretty short timeframe to...
Yeah, you, we talked to Finance about it and she's like, "You can't just bond it out like a savings account to have it." You know, there's stipulations that once you bond the money, it's got to be used in a certain timeframe.
And if we were to take the property to get the access to Aldi's, that would be pretty expensive.
That would be a big chunk of...
That'd be a...
Along with a bridge.
If we have...
A pedestrian bridge.
Yeah.
If we can't cut a deal with the guy friendly, then, and we wind up taking, it could get very expensive.
Okay. Thanks.
How much money does the DDA collect every year from...
Just over $2 million.
How much?
Just over $2 million.
$32 million.
No, $2. $2. Yeah.
It's about $2 million, $2.97.
How much was the estimate of the pedestrian bridge?
It's, it's, well, first I was told a half a million, but now it's more like $3 million.
$3 million?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. You have to make it ADA accessible, too, so it can't just be stairs. You've got to do ramps and that's going to take a lot of property to build. Yeah.
And that would be down by, oh, by the 275?
Other side of the...
You know, it's open, you know, to whatever the board decides, but originally when we started discussing it, we just thought that that area made the most sense because you've got the I-275 trail right there.
And for the flags, have you ever done a, I mean, it's a, I think you really can tell the difference when you come into the community, so it's a good job. The flags, though, have you ever done a survey as to whether people have found that helped them find things? Because if you don't know about the flags when you're coming into town from out of Canton.
Right.
You kind of, you don't know what they are. So how do we let people know?
We, it was part of our public input for the master plan that we just did. We did a public survey and we did ask them, "Are you aware of the wayfinding? Do you know what the flags mean?" Out of the 400 people that actually took the survey, a majority of them did not know what it was. You know, it was kind of one of those things where we developed it and then we need the businesses themselves to buy into it, you know, like, "Yeah, this is Target. We're in the red district." We could never get the businesses to actually, you know...
Adopt.
Yeah, adopt it and use it. You know, some did, but not all of them did. And, you know, it's so hard to find, wayfinding is so hard nowadays, too, because everybody's got their phone. So they're Google mapping it or MapQuesting it, so I don't, it's kind of hard to quantify whether it's useful or not. It's a bright pop of color.
Okay. Thanks.
Then one other thing to add was with the recent withdrawal by the Canton Public Library out of the DDA agreements, that'll be a hit to the DDA's budget of about 7.7%, which will not hit your books until '19?
Next year. Because the new plan takes effect January 1st, 2018, so they'll be out of the tax capture for 2018. We'll still be able to capture it for 2017. We just won't have it next year.
So your pending budget has to take those, that into adjustment.
Which is, we'll be meeting next Wednesday to discuss the budget, but...
With the different designs for Ford Road, is there an understanding of what that would do to some of the things you've already deployed, like the lights and the walls and things like that?
Yeah. Well, because where the looms would go for the turnarounds of the Boulevard, I mean, we would have to be ripping out some walls and some streetlights. Yeah. Yeah. It'll be a big project and probably a headache, but to have it done and completed will be the best thing for Ford Road, the businesses, and the residents.
What else did you find out in the master plan survey that you did? What other questions did you ask?
We just asked people like, "What would you like to see? Do you, you know, do you find it walkable?" It was a whole range of questions. You know, people would say, "We want more mom-and-pop downtown like Plymouth," and it's like, "Well, we're never going to be Plymouth. We have to embrace who we are, but there are things that we can do to make it more walkable and accessible." There are bike racks that people were interested in seeing, electric car charging stations. You know, I can send you guys the, the public comments.
That'll be good.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, board. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
That was very efficient. Now, next up, we have Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage. And Bill, you're going to be speaking, leading, and then Director Holenberger, do you maybe want to lead in with the...
I have the rest of my staff over there.
Any of the other board, commission members are welcome to join us up here at the chairs.
Come on in, guys.
We brought a, we called out to our members and asked them to show up tonight and, boy, did they. Exceeded my expectations.
Hello.
We've got additional seats over here, ladies, if you'd like, please.
Whatever. I'll give everyone a second to get settled and then I'll do a quick intro for us. Pulling up ours. Beautiful, thank you. All right, so this is a little overview of the Cultural Commission for Car, easy for me to say. Cultural Commission for Cultural Arts and Heritage. With us tonight, we have Bill Testin, who is our current Chair of the Committee. We also have Cecilia Escobar. And if I mispronounce names or miss anybody, I have my whole list of everyone that showed up. I apologize. Anthony Davis is here with us. Sue Dodson.
No Anthony.
I don't see Anthony.
No?
Darian Moore?
Darian Moore. Why did I have Anthony on there? Okay, Darian Moore is here with us. There he is. Darian Moore, Sue Dodson, Susan Swant, Ken Bova, Samir Sakakini. How'd I do?
Summer.
Summer Sakakini and Herb Scott. Did I miss anybody?
Where's Herb? Where'd you go?
I saw, I thought I saw you walk in. And with that, Bill is going to run us through overview.
Okay. First of all, I don't know if everybody knows me or not. I'm Chairman for 2017 and Ken will be Chairman, just so you know, for 2018 and Darian Moore is 2019. So we are programmed for future leadership. I've been in the township since '76, a member of the Rotary Club, a member of the Historical Society, Vice President, President of that, and now I've been with the Commission for three years. So that gives you a little bit of background about me. We did a study on the strategic plan update and that's what we're going to present today to you. As you can see from the slide, we were established in 2003. We tried to get work into visual arts and drama, music, dance, historical heritage, which is the Historical Society, and humanities. And as you can see, the mission that we have is just to keep the culture, arts, and heritage alive in Canton community and by diversity and promoting the spirit and keeping the history alive. The vision was developed with the new strategic plan and the wording, as you can see, as the auto history is to Michigan, culture and arts is to Canton. That is our main focus of that. The strategic plan, we updated it in 2017 and you all have, you all have a copy of it there in front of you. We put a lot of effort into it. It was a group project with a lot of input from the Commission to come up what you have in front of you. Our established goals, as you can see, is the Chirico Village area, which will also take into Partnership for the Arts Ford Factory area, which Jill will talk to you about when she has her turn. We've checked in far as the development of community appreciation. We tried to stretch, we hope to stretch this out, not just to Canton, but to the surrounding communities to bring them in to Canton. And that's like Ypsilanti, Westland, Plymouth, Garden City, Novi, whatever's out there to bring it into Canton as far as the Village Theater productions, when the Ford Factory gets developed and that type of thing. So it's a wide-ranging, we think, opportunity for us as a township. As far as the membership, you can see that we do have the school district, which we, at present, are looking for somebody to fill that position. We do not have anybody at this time from the school district, but you see, we do have, pretty much everybody is covered, I mean, from the different departments within the Now, with the membership selection process, which we're in the process of doing right now, we have three openings and we have three people to interview. Oh, we got four. Okay, excuse me. Okay, we gained another one. Okay. We have four for three places. The interviews will be handled, will be next week, which will in turn, Greg, myself, the Senior Board, past Presidents, will be interviewing the applicants, at which we would hope to make a decision and then bring it to you, to the board for approval to the Commission. As you can see by the next slide on the staff, it's all volunteer, as you know, and everybody that's there on the list usually is at our meetings. We have a very good support group. As you can see, tonight, they're all, and I didn't threaten them either, I just asked them to show up. But we're a very cohesive group and we've done a lot and I know they'll be doing a lot more. Our meeting date has been changed for next year to accommodate better attendance from some of the staff, leisure staff. We do usually meet on a Monday. Now it'll be on a Thursday, but still the four times a year with any subcommittee meetings necessary in between. As far as cultural events, you can see that we're pretty, every month during the year, there's always something going on. Most of it's at the Village Theater, which we get great support from that department of the township. I know right now that Martin Luther King is being worked on with Darian. The, in as far, and down there with Salute to Service, that's being handled and I know that's going on and we done on Saturday, the 11th. November 18th will be the International Festival, which is a very big draw for diversity in, I mean, as far as diversity in the township. We usually get the theaters pretty packed with that. One that isn't on there, and I'll talk about it a little later, and how, that came up with Anthony Davis was, saw this in Farmington and he brought it to the board for discussion and we're on board with it. It's called "How Do You Spell Canton?" And I'll explain it to you after we get done with these. But as you can see, I mean, we're, it's very active, very diverse, trying, you know, trying to keep with the culture that is in the community and trying to get all of the cultures involved. And that's another main project that we have, is trying to get all the cultures represented. And for a selection, oh, what did I do? Oops, wrong one. I'll tear in one more page. Yeah, wrong one. Okay. And, and then naturally, our biggest, one of the biggest things we have is Culture Week. This week, this coming year, it'll be May 5th, I think. Am I right, Darren? Or something?
A little bit later.
Is it May?
Yeah.
Yeah, one weekend. Anyway, we're still working on it, but it'll be May during one of the weeks in May. As you can see, what events take place, one of the biggest events that take place is that Art of Fashion at the Village Theater. This will be what?
Third year? Fourth year?
Fourth year.
Fourth year. Darian, his wife, and their daughter put that on and worked that up. And if anybody hasn't been to one, been to it, they should go. It's very popular. And that's on that. Do you have anything you wanted to add at this time? Okay. And then on this, so I'll cut back to this Canton. So we discussed this and we're in the process right now of working on it. We hope to have it done, probably it'll be under Kenny's reins, but probably in spring, depending. And what the idea is, it to take, as you can see there, is to take all different pictures and come up with the word Canton and display it. And then the idea is we'll select out of so many that come in and we'll have a winner and hopefully we can get that displayed at the Village Theater, all of them, and possibly like, like different ribbons for second and third place. We were still on the talking stage on that. I think it's a great idea. The whole board thought it was a great idea. Gets everybody involved and that's where we're at. But I'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
We also have with us this evening, our board representative.
Right.
For the Commission.
Yep. Sorry. His fault. He missed it. He missed it. No, that's okay.
Oh, Greg's fault, no. I just wanted to tell everybody that the Commission worked really hard on the strategic plan this year and if you get a chance to check it out, it's got some good information in here about where the Commission hopes to go.
Are there any board questions, comments?
I haven't known my Commission for seven years.
Good job.
Also, thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for letting us and the community know through this presentation what we have going on in Canton in terms of culture and heritage. I think we do a lot and it's wonderful. I've been to many of the events and have enjoyed them all. One question that I've, that's been on my mind for a number of years, actually, and I think we identified this as one of our goals in our goal-setting in August that we did, was understanding if there's anything we can do to celebrate the many different holidays celebrated by our different cultures. I know that we, as an organization, as a township, put on a holiday party that's mainly Christmas-centered, which is great and everybody enjoys the activities around that, but we don't really highlight any of the other holidays that are celebrated in our community. I'm not really sure how to do that and I don't have the answer. I just was wondering if it was something that this organization could take up. I don't know, Pat, if, if we're working on that at all as a township beside, we just brought it, really brought it to light as something we might want to look at.
Before, before Greg shares what we're planning to do in December, I think it's common knowledge with the board, and if it's not, I apologize. Canton Township did actually celebrate Diwali for the first time ever inside Township Hall.
Oh, okay. No, I wasn't, actually.
We had a luncheon put on by the BAPS community.
Right. Okay, I remember that.
The week, I think it was the kickoff day for Diwali. And basically, the, their community came in, they decorated this space here and made lunch for all the employees in the township. Also, kind of unique and different was the first time ever is we approved a fireworks celebration for Diwali that also just happened to be, were, come out of the BAPS community, which was, I thought, pretty phenomenal presentation.
That's, I've often thought it was, that it would have to be in partnership with different, perhaps, religious organizations that are in our community to make sure that it's something that they are even interested in, so that's good.
Again, I am by far no expert, but the, what we did with the BAPS community was a neat introduction to not only the employees, but some of the folks from their community to come into Township Hall that afternoon. And I'm sure we could do, you know, at the same level, you know, Christians, we have, you know, Christmas holiday at the end of the year. We've got Diwali for the Hindu community. You've got Eid for the Muslim community. So there's opportunities throughout the year.
Yeah.
To highlight and do special, unique events.
That would be great.
Interfaith is doing something. Don't the Interfaith foundation does something?
Yep, Interfaith group, right.
So maybe we could work with them.
But also, we have planned for this year for our holiday celebration and the year here.
Yes, but the tree lighting, the staff is working on with, especially kind of in partnership with our block Youth and Teen Center and I think the Youth Council on an educational area within the summit where we'll be highlighting the different holidays from different cultures around the world with kind of some information and as... from different cultures around the world with kind of some information, and as, the anticipation is that we'll continue to grow as we build partnerships with the different religious communities in Canton, so that they can help us better promote that area, as well as what it is that's meaningful about those, the different holidays for the different cultures, because I think, as you said, you know, for us to really do it successfully, we need to do it in partnership with the different faith communities, instead of trying to, or, you know, for me to try and educate somebody on the BAPS festivals are not, it's not very effective, it's not nearly as effective as it could be.
Thanks, that sounds good. Good. Thanks, Cecilia.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you very much, team. Wonderful. Well done. Keep up the good work. And now, you still only have 20 minutes.
We just cut it to 15.
You're covering my drive time. Well, you also have, you also have another board member coming in, so.
Oh, wait, wait, some of you need to stay up there.
Yeah, Herb.
So we have to have everybody.
You and Ole, new partnership members, too.
I have to move over to the other chair.
And Greg Holmberger? Have you met Hasina before?
No.
Okay. This is the mysterious Hasina that you've been trying to reach. Hasina, he's been trying to get a hold of you.
I responded to her. I don't know who else is here.
Are you seeing her?
Okay, so now we have Jill Engel from Partnership for the Arts, and our incoming chair for Partnership for the Arts, I believe, Bart? Is that an accurate statement?
Bart is incoming chair, that starts in January, so, and then we have several other current members, and incoming, a couple of incoming members that are also with us as well.
And former. Would you like to introduce, or?
Yeah, real quick.
Sue Dodson.
Hi, Sue.
Hasina Abdul.
Summer Sekakini.
Sue Modson.
Brooke Scott.
Marion Rosum.
Art Patterson.
And Jill, and I think I know all of you, so, and I talked a lot enough that I probably won't even need this number.
Jill, before you get rolling, do you, any longer, there's not a board representative on your?
No.
Your board today?
No.
From the township? Okay. Well, we could talk about that later. Okay.
Yes. It was decided two years ago it was not needed.
Not.
For separate entity.
You are. Agreed.
Yeah.
But I had the pleasure to serve, and I know Steve had the pleasure to serve for a period of time, so.
Which one of us served better?
Okay, so I want to keep you all on your timeframe, and I didn't do a question slide, so we'll make sure. So, a couple of things before we get into who the partnership is, some things to ask yourself that we wanted to pose at the Board of Trustees, to ask yourself, is it important to expand the art opportunities in Canton? Is it important to establish Cherry Hill Village as an arts landing place, for Cherry Hill Village's economic development to benefit from a tourist destination? To plan and organize new events for Cherry Hill Village, to offer an all-inclusive and all-year-round gathering place for Canton, and for the partnership to build the Village Arts Factory? And I think that Bill touched on a lot of things, I mean, we are definitely embraced, and I was on the commission for seven years, and so we are definitely involved with the commission and its mission and its vision, so.
Oh, I like this.
Okay, so the Partnership for Arts and Humanities is a 501(c)(3) organization, and just to give you a little background, I don't have a slide on this, so we have a 14-member board, and currently, or, when the partnership started, but back when the theater opened, there was no executive director. They had a board, and they made all their decisions for the first two years, and then the third year, they decided that they needed an executive director, and so they hired someone to work 15 hours a week, who was basically doing admin, they did one fundraiser a year, and they had a donor society and worked with the theater, and so that was how that worked. And then I hired him in 2010, and we'll talk about, that was something that we needed to boost community relations. At that point, the theater had been open seven years, and the partnership had given over $700,000 to the Canton community, and they had never been in the newspaper once. Nobody knew what the partnership was, so I'm gonna tell you right now. So who are we and what have we done? The partnership was created in 1998 to be the funding arm for the construction of the Village Theater at Cherry Hill, and all of you, obviously, have bought our 400-seat, state-of-the-art theater. So that was why we were created, so that businesses or residents could donate through a nonprofit, and that we could do that. $5 million is what the partnership, what the nonprofit, what our nonprofit organization actually donated to the construction of the theater. After the theater opened in 2004, our mission changed to encouraging the development of the arts. And most recently, just two months ago, we actually changed that again, and it's encouraging the development of arts and humanities, so we added that piece into that. So our mission changed after we were done with construction, we needed to have a new purpose. The partnership actually held back a little bit of money when the theater opened, so that they could give out grants to the artist groups at the theater to make sure that the artist groups at the theater were sustainable. So the first nine years after the theater opened, over $900,000 was given, the first nine years, and then two years after that, also in '14 and '15, the partnership had some grant opportunities with Ford Motor Company, and we continued to give money to Canton Township. Canton Township has received over $600,000, and that's not the artist groups at the theater, that is to Canton Township, to the Village Theater, for Canton Township-produced shows for those first nine years that the theater opened. Michigan Philharmonic, originally Orchestra Canton, when the theater first opened, they've received over $100,000, and this is in addition, so probably more upwards of $200,000. Forever After Production had received over $100,000. Canton Concert Band, over $35,000. Spotlight Players, over $50,000. And these are all other grant recipients since the theater opened, that have all received money from the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities, so about, almost a million dollars. In addition, we also have the African-American History Through Artist Eyes. There was a fifth-grade field trip that was done at the Village Theater for all fifth-grade students in the Plymouth Canton schools, and then the last two years that that field trip was done, it also included the charter schools, but it was to bring all the fifth-grade students into the Village Theater during the month of February to learn about African-American history. So the buses and the performances, those were all paid, the partnership solicited grants for all those students to be able to come. Seventeen schools, all the fifth graders in all those schools, and so that was something else that the Partnership for Arts and Humanities did. Additional Canton support, this is probably the longest slide in this whole thing, but I thought it was really important for the current trustees, for all of you to know, all of the support that we give to Canton Township, from the time that the theater started up until now. So, social media, we've got a Facebook page for Village Arts Factory and for the partnership, we also have a Twitter page. We promote the Village Theater, the Historical Society, Township Events, and Amenities and History. We do questions. We do an annual piano rental for the visual, the Village Theater. We do marketing, we're in charge of the Village Theater annual program. We have a monthly newsletter that is sent out to almost 1,000 people. The Village Theater is on our newsletter every single month. We do, our website has the Village Theater on our website, local newspaper articles, networking events, flyers, marketing folders, and I have done personally so many tours of the Village Theater with local business candidates, I can't even count how many. Just this past week, we had Michael Bender from, he is the new chief academic officer with Plymouth Canton Schools, he came out, and so we met to talk about the Village Arts Factory, but I brought him in for a tour from the Village, for the Village Theater, he had never been there before. So we partner constantly to make sure that we are promoting that amenity, because that's what we were about. We are also the financial arm for the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage, so when they do events and they have donations, they come through the partnership to go to the commission, so we are the funding arm for them. We have local connections, and we are now also in that vision and mission with the commission. We are members of the Canton and Plymouth Chambers, and we promote our Canton amenities, and also our Village Theater with both of those chambers constantly. We are part of Leadership Canton, we are promoter of Leadership Canton, I have also, I'm a graduate of 2012, and since then, I have been a presenter for Leadership Canton every single year. We also have non, other nonprofit partners, partners. We share an office with the Canton Community Foundation, and we have several other organizations, like the Westlake Community Foundation partnered with the partnership to do a performance. We have Plymouth organizations, Canton organizations, so in other nonprofits, Chicks for Charity and things like that, that we have partnered with, so we are constantly promoting Canton. Also, Plymouth Canton Art Show has 2,000 pieces a year, it's every single school of Plymouth Canton Schools. The Partnership for Arts and Humanities has been helped market and helped with funding for that event for over five years, it's been ever since we started. So these are all things that we are doing for and with Canton Township. So, why the Village Arts Factory project? How did this come about? Why is, why is this going on? So about seven years ago, which was right at the time I got hired in, the partnership was granting out more funds than we were taking in. So, and to put this in perspective, we did, the partnership does two fundraisers a year that raises anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000, and we do a donor society that's about $20,000. So the partnership was taking in about $40,000 a year, but we were giving, the lowest amount of grant funding that we ever gave out to the artist groups in Canton was $50,000. That was the lowest amount that we ever granted on an annual basis, but we were taking in only $40,000. So, based on that, our bank, our bank funds started to deplete, we knew that we needed to create a stable revenue and a stable income, so that we could continue to support the arts in Canton Township, so that we could continue to support our local school districts, the artist groups, and so we brainstormed, how do we do this? How do we create that positive cash flow while continuing to promote the Village Theater in Cherry Hill Village? This is why we came up with the Village Arts Factory. This is why we're doing this project, so that any revenue that is gained from this project when it's completed, that's going to be the sustainable revenue to go back into the artist groups, and to go back into Canton, and go back in to partner with the commission. So along came this vision, to turn this property that's one block west of the Village Theater into a regional arts center. More opportunities for kids in our community and region, more opportunities for adults in our region and for Canton, more opportunities for other organizations such as the Village Potters Guild that's currently in Plymouth that wants to come back to Canton, more opportunities for all of these art, because the Village Theater, they've got their gallery, they have visual arts, so we're gonna put visual arts and performing arts here in Canton. So, summer of 2012, property for sale, 14 acres with a house and an abandoned dilapidated 50,000-square foot warehouse. Henry Ford's 19 Village Industries, which is a secret. It was not, there was no media, nothing. We've got lots of information on this. And this property is listed on the National Historic Register as part of the Cherry Hill Historic District. It's an automotive site that can be added to the National Parks and Records Trails Program, as well as pure Michigan tourism. Southeast Canton Township is a potential place-making opportunity for economic development. The partnership purchased this property for $22,500 in 2012, we paid $18,000 for environmental studies that had to be done, because it was an industrial site, we had to make sure there was no contamination, plus we also had property taxes for the first year that we purchased it. This contained two structures, the two historic structures and the warehouse. First historic structure is the Henry Ford Dormitory that was built in the 1900s. We also had the Cherry Hill Ford Plant, which actually looks like that again, finally. It was built in 1943, operations began in '44, 30 employees. Property was added on to several times after Ford sold the property, 45,000 square feet of warehouse was added on to. The factory, portion of the factory was actually built over, a basin of the Lower Rouge River runs north and south for our entire property, and the warehouse was actually built over that and was in a floodplain. Property condition, at the time we bought this property, this is huge, no sewer connection, no township water connection, no electric service, and six months before we bought the property, it was completely vandalized and stripped clean. No copper, no electric, no wiring, no anything. No stormwater facilities. Buildings were unsecured and vandalized with graffiti, and there were also three additional smaller buildings on the south side of the warehouse that were a liability risk, and that teenagers in the community were hanging out, and that they needed to also be taken down to make sure that it was a safe place. So what is the plan? The concept is yesterday meets tomorrow, and we have folders for all of you, but we're gonna give them to you when we're done, so that I had your attention. Current goals, programs for female veterans, skill trade education for students and veterans, visual artist studio space, the Michigan Visual Artist Hall of Fame, which we have service marked in Lansing, done deal, it's ours. Food and beverage destination, really.
Wow.
Food and beverage destination, eight acres of walking and bike trails, we are in the five-year leisure services plan, with place-based learning options for continued education, historic automotive heritage tourism site. Why veterans? Cherry Hill was Henry Ford's most unique, and it was his final Village Industry. There were 19 Village Industries, the previous 18 had off-season farmers. This is the only site, it had a residency, and it was for disabled WWII veterans, so it was the only one like that. There was no sign, there was no media, this is a unique historic secret. It's Canton history, it's automotive history, and it's US history. It's huge. Veterans manufactured automobile parts with their hands, production ceased in '45, Henry Ford died in '47, and Ford Motor Company sold the property in 1950. During our planning phase, Michigan State University students in a philanthropy class said, you know what, you're an arts and culture organization, what if you tied back the veterans' dormitory to do veterans' art therapy programs? And that way, you bring it back and circle it and tie it back to what Henry Ford created back in 1944. We loved it, it stayed with us since we started this plan. We have a tenant for this building, Eisenhower Center in Ann Arbor, they are a traumatic brain injury center that has residents from all over the nation. They work with the NFL, the NHL, they have a program called After the Impact, and so they decided, wouldn't it be great to make this female veterans? Because they're underserved, it's an area that needs this, so they can do enhancement programs in the dormitory, but they decided to specialize it for female veterans. Why school trades? It's a chance to repurpose, and this actually came out of the mouth of one of the directors from School Craft, it's a chance to repurpose a historic manufacturing building with modern manufacturing. We do not have a contract signed for this yet, but we are close. They've had their construction and design team come out, they know what programs, they want to do rapid prototyping, they want to do desktop CNC machines, CAD, computer basics, mini machine shop. So again, full circle, ties it back. So why is this important? We just did Manufacturing Day, you know, Canton Township and the Canton Chamber, to talk about the need for skilled trades in manufacturing. This is why this is here. The arts warehouse, it's a 32,000-square-foot building, 18-foot ceilings, it's divided into two sections. This is the place where we're gonna do studio spaces for lease, and that's why we added in commercial to this project, because in doing our planning, we found out that artists can't afford a lot of money for lease. So we added in commercial into our plan to keep the rates lower. And when I say keep the rates lower, commercial property goes for $20 to $25 a square foot in Canton Township, we're talking about studio space from $8 to $12 a square foot. We want the artists there, and we get calls every week asking when this studio space is going to be available. Also, a proposed food and beverage destination, we've given out packets to several people, and we want to partner with, definitely with Canton Township, to make sure that we're bringing in the right person, if you had a lot of people requesting brewery and microbrews, especially from Cherry Hill Village. Pedestrian paths, bike trails that connect to Cherry Hill Village, and also, hopefully, not only to the Rouge Trails, in the five-year plan with not only to the Rouge Trails in the five-year plan with Leisure Services, but also we're a quarter mile east of Washtenaw County. So to also, so that people can bike ride, they can walk there, bike ride there, drive there, along with sculpture gardens and lots of programs. So establishing Cherry Hill Village as a regional arts destination for Southeast Michigan. We want this to be bigger than Canton. We want people to be able to come to Canton Township from outside our community and inside our community. Marketing materials were created, we have these for you tonight. Tasks accomplished, we have a list in these folders for all of you tonight to talk about everything that we've accomplished to date with this project since we purchased it. And you'll see at the bottom, this includes expenses over $500,000. Have we spent $500,000? No. We have been busting our tails with in-kind services, in-kind materials, grants, so labor. And by the way, on staff besides our 14-person board, I worked 32 hours as the executive director and we have a five-hour admin person a week. That's our staff. Progress that we've made, exterior progress made. We took down 12,000 square feet over the warehouse, over the river. This is the interior of the dormitory when we started demolition, when we finished interior demolition. And just last month, we had 30 Ford Motor Company employees that were out. We are now drywalled, it is insulated, and they painted the entire building. We took the exterior wood, all that's been done. This is the factory, did completely interior demolition, started with volunteers, used a company to finish. Mantered roof came off this summer to take it back to its original architecture. Elevators going in, we have elevators in both historic buildings because they were not ADA accessible. In 2016, we had members of the Plymouth Canton Art Club, they designed a 100-foot mural, they sketched it out on the building. We had Ford Motor Company volunteers come out and paint this in. This is also in the Commission program you'll see, so we have a 100-foot mural. It was a beautification program because this was the last building that was going to be done on our project and we wanted to make sure that people knew what it was going to be and we wanted to try and make it look nice until that building was done. Our timeline to complete, dormitory will be done in December, then we've got a dormitory parking lot because of Wayne County challenges will be done in the spring now. We will do a capital campaign for the warehouse next year. Warehouse construction will begin in 2019 and then we'll work with Leisure Services. So what is the Village Arts Factory? It's history, arts, education, veterans, environment, entertainment, recreation, economic development. It's bringing our neighboring communities together, solidifying the past and strengthening Canton's future. So how does this benefit Canton? It provides daytime foot traffic to Cherry Hill Village, weekend destination for residents and non-residents both. Sustainable support for the artist groups at the Village Theater, aligns with the vision with the Commission, encourages more growth and vitality for Cherry Hill Village, increases visibility and sales for the Village Theater. How can Canton help advance this project? Close on the one-acre purchase from the partnership, construct a public parking lot on the one-acre west of the warehouse, because the gravel parking lot is going to be gone soon and that's Village Theater parking. And we've also got School Craft, you know, where is that parking lot? So the factory parking lot for skilled trades education is going to be the public parking lot on the west side of the warehouse. And it's also supporting the project by collaborating on economic development. This is key for us coming in here tonight, because as Kristin Thomas is looking for restaurants to come into Canton, we're looking for a restaurant to come into our property. So if, if the partnership doesn't know what Canton's working on, you may be looking at the same restaurant we are. So it makes sense to make sure that we are constantly communicating, that we constantly know how that's working so that we're not working on the same business. You know, we just gave a folder to Ford Garage in Dearborn. We also gave a folder to Hop Cat Kalamazoo, who specializes in arts. So we want to have that collaboration. So this goes back to our, the questions when we started this program. All of these questions for you. We believe that the partnership is the answer and that the Village Arts Factory and partnering with the Commission and partnering with Canton Township and partnering with the Village Theater, which by the way, Joe Voriak is amazing and, and there couldn't be a better person to do this. In your folders are the normal things that go out to every prospect. We use these folders for donors and also prospective tenants. But the couple of things that we did add in here for you, there's a donor list in here so you can see who our support is, our list of our complete board members. We also put in here letters of support to date from everyone who has written a letter of support for us. It's a pretty impressive list. And then the dorm and factory cost summary of what we've spent and what is still to come and everything else is what goes into this packet. My 20 minutes are done.
Plus a few, thank goodness the other folks gave it up to you, we appreciate that. Jill, I must say, is, I've learned some new things today and that's wonderful. So you are making progress, that's awesome. Low on the way about the Arts Hall of Fame?
We service marked that in January of 2016, it's ours, it's done. So the goal is that the wall that divides the warehouse, another parallel wall will be put in so that that corridor that runs from the west parking lot to the historic buildings, that will be about a 4,000 square foot corridor and it will double as a gallery. So we service marked the Michigan Visual Arts Hall of Fame so that we could do, just elaborate on the gallery that the Village Theater does. But it's also, it's a corridor, so everyone coming from the parking lot to come through the building has to come through there and we can, you know, really promote.
Perfect. Are there any board questions, comments?
I know you guys have to go.
Well, no, we're doing fine. Anne Marie, go ahead.
That's very impressive, thank you Jill, very nice. I saw each other not long ago. When you talked about earlier, you said you were $400,000 in the hole and you were, how did you fund?
Not the hole, that was, that was what we had depleted our bank account down to. So our bank account had gone all the way down to 400,000. And so the partnership, I mean, we were just give, what, what they were doing the first, what we were doing the first nine years is we were giving out grants and especially I would say the first six years, we were, like the first couple of years, there was $200,000 a year, then it was $100,000 a year, then it was $75,000. In just the last two years, which was the eighth and the ninth year, did they do the $50,000. So we were just giving out money and giving out money and giving out money and the bank account was going, and all of a sudden, okay, wait a minute, the artist groups still want the support, but we're going to run out of money. So we have to start bringing in as much as we're giving out. And it was coming up with a solution to be able to do that so that we can continue to promote the arts in our community. So that it goes back to the Commission. We want Canton to be to arts what automotive is to Detroit.
So what is the, the funding, I mean, your budget in terms of your funding's all grants now or is it laid out?
No. We still, so we take in about $20,000 right now from the Village Theater program and we offered to actually give that to the Village Theater a couple of years ago and we were told that they didn't have the time and the staff to do that. So it's our donor society and our two fundraisers and then we have grants and then you'll see in one of the handouts in your factory, we've had donations, largest donation that's not a grant was pulting homes over $50,000. Down to, we get $500 donations, $1,000 donations, so private donations. And that's something, Anne Marie, that we were told when we started this project after the two years of planning, is that go get, go get half of the project done to show the community that there is sustainability and a need and a want for this project and then come back and do a capital campaign. Don't do the capital campaign in the beginning because people are going to be like, are you going to be able to pull this off? So that's why we, we've been busting our tails to do grant funding and private donor donations so we could get the historic side of the property done. And now that that's going to be done, we'll do the capital campaign for the warehouse. And we're pretty confident that we've shown that there's a need and a want for someplace like this and for Canton to have this.
How much do you need each year do you think to keep it running?
Well, interesting, so we actually, that's not in your folder, but we had a company come in when we were doing planning to give us an operating. And we have a business plan actually, so if you would like a copy of that, we're more than welcome to supply you with that. But we had a company come in to say, once it's completely, once the property's completely done, what were the, what would the operating expenses be? I don't remember the number off the top of my head, I want to say it was under 300,000. So we knew that the rent would pay for that and there would still be money left over so that we could give that money out for grants again.
Also talked about working with the vets. Are you working with the Ann Arbor vets then or will it be turned, or just females?
Eisenhower Center will be the tenant for the veterans dormitory and they have that relationship with the VA, with the DAV, with lots of those organizations. So they will partner, they, they will have that partnership, which we will support. And we've already had people like Ford Motor Company say, it may be, you know, they may want to do an annual grant of $50,000 for a veterans program. So we've already had people come to us and say they want to do programming grants, we're not doing construction.
Okay, well, that's good.
It is good.
Now, I know just because the department next to mine, they were in my department, actually they work with a lot of old sites and so a lot of the sites are contaminated and you talked about that earlier and what, what did you find then?
We were good. We did a Phase One and a Phase Two in a property condition and we actually had two different companies, because we did the Phase One and Phase Two before we bought the property and then after we bought the property, we ended up having to do them again because they have a lifespan that you have to do them. But it was because there were underground tanks and it was an industrial ware property, so we had to make sure that there was no underground contamination. So we did all that prior to purchase.
And they removed the tanks since then?
Everything was done. Some of the things that weren't even there and had been removed, but there were no records. So, and we also did a historic structure report, it was a 40, $43,000 report to make sure, to work with the Secretary of Standards, that when we were rehabilitating the historic buildings, to make sure that we were doing them how we were supposed to. And for instance, we could have put a parking lot between the dormitory and factory up on Ridge Road, but we decided to do it behind the buildings because we wanted to leave the landscaping as Henry Ford intended and, and how he did that back in 1943. So that was also, the landscaping portion was really important to us. And actually, the nine acres south of the buildings, there's less than one acre of wetland. We could build on eight acres, but we wanted, you know, partnering with, being able to do walking and bike trails and floral gardens and sculpture gardens and, and, I mean, Leisure Services is known for parks and rec and, you know, that's important. Thank you. You're welcome.
Are you hoping to have everything done and open?
So, we can't occupy, the dormitory will be done in December, but we can't occupy that building until the parking lot's done. We have, our fourth application went in with Wayne County in May. So that's an underground storage, I mean, for summer, we went from having a budget for $250,000 for the dormitory parking lot to it going to $500,000. So when somebody was, I think it was Amy from DDA talking about expense, because they wanted underground storm detention.
Oh yeah.
And so this is for a 10-space parking lot. We're a nonprofit and so we've had to go back and forth and, and a lot of, so bottom line, as soon as that parking lot's done, Eisenhower Center wants to come in by April or May and we're hoping to get the additional funding to finish off the factory so that hopefully that School Craft, but that they come in in the summer, they said it doesn't matter, it doesn't have to coincide with the school district, they can bring programs in at any time. So both the historic buildings, the hope is that in the spring of this coming year, that both the historic buildings will be open. And then we'll do the capital campaign for the warehouse and hopefully do that whole thing and get ready to open that up in 2019.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, I know we have to get going here. The, first of all, I've always enjoyed this project, I was pleased to be a part of it for four years and I look forward to being a part of it in the future again and working with all of you I enjoyed very much. Jill, two things. One is the warehouse piece, is, how much of it is going to have to be like tear down versus?
We actually did, we got folks in the beginning to completely demolish it since it's not historic or to renovate it. The only thing, the roof, the roof needs to completely be redone, but the rest of the structure is fine. So it's just going to be, you know, the floor, the roof and kind of, you know, it needs repainting and, you know, there's some stone replacement, but, and things like that, but the structure itself besides the roof is in great condition.
Okay. Guys, the pictures look beautiful, but I know the condition of like a lot of it just isn't right now, so.
And you're more than we would be happy to take you on a tour anytime, any day.
Great. The other thing is, you mentioned the parking lot and moving forward with that and the only thing, the only question I have on that is, is there been any study done on, in terms of like how we're going to share this parking lot and how, like when there's something at the Village Theater that we make sure there will be parking and things like that?
We actually proposed when the, when Canton Township bought that one acre on our property. So first of all, the funding from that one acre purchase was building the dormitory parking lot. That's what that funding was for. So, but when we first talked about it with Canton, it was, you know, public parking because Canton needs more public parking and Preservation Park and our Village Arts Factory were exact same distance. So by doing it at the Village Arts Factory, then we have the public parking for that. But we also said, you know, maybe in things like when Michigan Philharmonic comes to the theater and there's a sellout show, then maybe we do busing so that we can, you know, bus people down there. You know, obviously if there's a show and there's enough parking in that area, we don't need to do that. But it wasn't going to be a shared, it was just necessarily from the get-go, it was, you know, can't, that money from that purchase was going towards the dormitory parking lot. Canton needed more public parking, so that was going to give us an opportunity for more public parking and it would be parking for the whole village. It, you know, it's, it's still very tricky. We get questioned, I, people think I work for the Village Theater. And it gets tricky because people are like, where do you park? I mean, people still don't know where to park when they go to the Village Theater. They don't know that you can park around the whole building. And so having one set place, and when you even, when you think about a Plymouth and how far you have to walk to be able to go to a restaurant, I mean, we're talking two blocks. And that's one of the reasons, Stephen, and for all of you, that we wanted a college satellite in the Ford Factory. We couldn't do a restaurant there. We knew that college students or high school students wouldn't care about walking 200 feet from the parking lot on the west side of the warehouse to come over to the factory. So that was another big reason why we wanted the college satellite to be that corner building for education and skilled trades, because we knew college students wouldn't have an issue in walking 200 feet.
So for our piece of it, Greg's going to be putting together an RBA for you early December to finish that deal up. And I think it's 19 right now is the funding budget for the paving, but meantime, between time, there's a lot of moving parts. We've got development happening across the street where we're going to start losing parking that we're currently using that's not ours, so.
So it's that finish?
By the theater, yeah, there's a lot of moving pieces. So more coming soon.
Getting it done. With School Craft.
Any additional questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comments? Seeing none, call for motion to adjourn?
We have three important dates this month.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee comments, please.
No, I won't stay.
Yes, you will, you've been appointed to three very important dates in November. Go ahead.
Goodness.
You gonna make, Michael do the presentation?
Every year John makes this.
I'm impressed, okay, go.
Do all three of them.
On November 11th will be the 242nd anniversary of the United States Marine Corps.
242nd anniversary of the United States Marine Corps.
Armist, we got Armistice Day coming up, right? Veterans Day?
11/11.
And then 11/28, 1939.
My birthday.
Michael, you're a very good student. Is there any additional board comment you'd like to make, trustee Anthony?
No.
Okay. Any additional board comments? Seeing none, call for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
Those in favor state aye. Aye. Thank you everybody, have a good night.